So thank you all for coming for the work session. And this is our first time with our new schedule doing a 4:30 work session and moved in straight to a 5:30 meeting afterwards, so we do appreciate everybody coming. It will give us a chance to start working through ordinances and working through zoning conversations that we need in the future, but then for tonight, we'll go through and kind of do our standard work session, which I know a couple of you gave updates a couple of weeks ago and you may not have as much. I'm going to open it up first for department head updates. We'll start with Mr. Dobbs. I always send it in with you, so we'll start off our evening with you first.
Well, as we updated in our last meeting, everything's going full speed ahead on getting all the digest submission stuff done. We're working on next year at Digest already, trying to keep up with everything. And just good response from the public this year. Website's working good, a lot of positive comments on that, and just working hard and trying to find enough people to keep us going. That's about it.
Well, we have a question. How do you update your website? Do y'all handle that yourselves?
No. What we do, we contract with Q Public to take care of that website.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just curious on that.
And our new updates on the maps make a big difference when you go on there. I was looking at a couple of things the other day and went back and pulled the history of an area and you can definitely see the progression in some areas of growth over the last several years.
Yeah.
I think that new map update made a big difference.
We're still waiting on the LiDAR that we purchased about four years ago. Hopefully someday the USGS will release that, but anyhow, we're still waiting on that.
Thank you. You mentioned Natasha.
We had 25 animal control calls for the month of August. Out of those 25, nine required being responded to by animal control. We had 68 animals come into the shelter in August and 71 went out either through adoption or rescue.
Pretty good odds there.
It is.
Good output. Questions?
Good job.
Thank you. God, I know you're hiding behind Bill's phone back there.
Yeah, I was gonna let Bill kind of touch on the new ordinance and then I was gonna kind of fill in after that.
After, okay. We'll get that, the next item, or two items down. Mr. Anderson.
We kind of dodged a bullet with the storm. Damage was pretty minimal. We do have quite a few trees scattered around and we'll be getting those up next week. We've got all roads are open, but we'll get what's left land on the side of the road. We'll try to get those up next week. Stan's will help us with a border under refuge there at Parker Road, and he finished it up today, so that should help alleviate some of the sheeting problem going across refuge right there. Got the lock graded behind the old high school for the rec. apartment. It's ready to go whenever they get ready to use it. And we finally got Upper Salem tore in gravel. It's been a long time coming, but we got a little weather wind right before all this moved in. The boys, they hit it hard and we got it done, and I was very proud of them. That's probably the biggest stretch of road we've done in this very short amount of time, but it turned out real well.
Are we paving that area behind the old school that you just mentioned?
We have no plans to at this time.
It was just gravel to grade for soccer.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was for our soccer.
Yeah, it is for the soccer families when they get out.
It looks nice.
Yeah, it turned out really well.
Y'all did a really good job.
It held up to the rain, too, to just finish it right before six rain. It held up well. And then I drove Upper Salem yesterday, and that blew me away, what in the difference that made.
It feels like asphalt when you drive it.
It does.
And that's like lots of the new machines that we purchased the last year. They really did a good job. We had the sales rep come out whenever it was at Evans and help us dial it in, show the guys, you know, what to do, what not to do, and kind of got the machine the way it needed to be. This, we did this one, you know, ourselves, and it turned out really well.
I'll take a ride on that soon.
We'll let you know next time we got it fired up.
There you go.
You haven't watched the video of how it operates, though. It's hooked to the back of a dump truck while the dump truck is in reverse backing while you're driving that machine. So you're at the mercy of a dump truck driver in reverse that can't see what's going on behind you. I wouldn't want to be anywhere around it while they were doing it.
There's a lot of coordination going on at that point.
Oh, gosh. Thank you. Y'all have anything else on that road? So, and I know we didn't have this discussion during our last meeting when we were going, but since we're to this section of the room, I'll go ahead and make that comment here. I know we've talked about it in department head meetings and some others, but Justin actually moved over last week to start working with grants and procurement. So he's already been researching like crazy on different grants and starting pre-application on quite a few areas. So he's been actively really getting that up and going, but the reason I bring that up at this point is that gave us an opportunity, or gave Wes an opportunity, to step in as the interim director of planning and development as well. And so he's kind of hit the ground full speed, going all in, probably already, we should get told we know whenever we said, I haven't had that conversation. So with that introduction that really sent you up nicely, Wes, we'll give you an update on planning and development.
I appreciate it. For this month, we've had 58 bill permits, 17 recycled homes, three mobile homes, 23 miscellaneous additions and so on, and four commercial, but three of those were for the county, so we had no revenue from those. And then 14, pardon, 11 renewals. The total intake for that month was $32,197. For this year, we have matched what we did, for this month, we've matched what we did last year, so we have four more months that we would show some additional revenue and hopefully be revenue neutral. You never know, which we're planning for. It's some hard work that Justin has done, and we're real happy to be able to use his resources and his lessons.
Since I set him up earlier, we're saying he's working hard and aggressively on researching grants. I'm going to give you an opportunity from the grants perspective of, and I know you just have got rolling, so I'm going to try and throw this forward.
So there's a couple of them that we're looking at right now. Talked to Brian there in Parks and Rec about some potential for one of the trails grants that DNR is offering. They offer it every year. They, he said they've done it a couple of times before, and it just seems to be one of those things where the people that are planning to get it, get it. So we'll track in this year. There's another one. It's the Georgia, it's the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, and they offer a very large grant. It's a little more competitive, but I think we have a couple of sites that are very advantageous to apply for. That's the ones in the pre-application phase right now. And there's a couple more out there that we've identified for water and sewer and such like that that we're in, that are in process. The hazardous waste trust fund reimbursement is being wrapped up right now. It's been submitted for payment, so that should be coming in very soon. Other than that, just a lot of reading and a lot of searching, it's like.
And that one's 157, is that correct?
157 something.
157, $157,000 is a reimbursement grant that comes back reimbursed for some of the planning and development. And Justin had started that grant process or the reimbursement grant, and he was still in planning and development, so that reimbursement will come in and be able to fund, you know, in there as well. Any questions on Wes or Justin, either one I did, we can just skip right by. Christie's favorite part, we're going to ask her how things are going to 911, so.
Going pretty good. Just trying to keep everybody healthy and getting ready for the weekend.
Have you had more calls with the COVID spike? I mean, can you see a difference in that?
I believe Monday, Chief Governor made touch on this. I believe Monday or Tuesday, they had 25 fire calls paged out in a 12-hour period. Normally 15 is busy.
And I think Sloan's going to do an update on COVID here in a couple of minutes, trying to save him for that point. Ms. Powell, HR, Orleans.
As far as, as mentioned in COVID, you know, y'all implemented the emergency basically. I think August the 5th was the date, and to date, we've had like 17 employees have to utilize it. And I talked with our benefits broker this morning. He called and he has, Signa did get him the numbers in, but he's still waiting on the pharmacy part and the stop loss stuff. He said hopefully he'd have some idea by next Friday.
Next Friday.
Yeah, we need to get that so we can get moving because up in Orleans needs to start a month or so. Very good. Thank you, thank you. We're going to turn it over to you in just a minute on the marshal side. I'll give you a chance on anything else. I was trying to make sure if there was anybody, any other questions before we move past the department updates to going into further discussions. The next item we had on the agenda was a sick time in employee donation policy. Kind of really just did that more as a discussion. I came up during a department head meeting the other day where they were discussing right now currently, if you max out your sick time as an employee, then it just goes away from that point forward, that there's nothing more that accumulates. Several counties, and then even within our own county, I know the sheriff's office has an internal policy that's a sick leave donation policy, so that if there's an employee that has to have an extended medical absence for some major treatment or something, it gives away to where other employees have a, have an opportunity to donate to, either to a bank or directly to an employee. I met with Karen in payroll and just kind of asked how that process worked from the payroll side, and she indicated it was fairly simple, the way that she keeps up with it. What I, what I really would like with y'all's blessing is for us to be able to research that policy a little bit further to find a way that we can get that in place to where if we do have somebody that goes out, when we have good employees and you have a good employee that has a major health issue, you want to make sure you give them a chance to keep their employment if at all possible, but then set some parameters to how that goes. But really just wanted to discuss if y'all were comfortable with us moving forward with, with getting a policy draft together to come back to a future meeting to actually vote on putting that in place. Feel comfortable with that?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Then we'll move forward with getting that piece together. I'll work with both Powell and with Karen and payroll, and then we'll, we'll get some other policies that some other places have, have in place already, and then we'll work with Bill on these together in a form that makes it possible. The next item on here is the review of the county ordinance for the marshal's office. I'm going to turn it over to Bill. He's gave each of you a draft kind of on how this is laid out, so we can work on getting the ordinance in place there.
We have two things in the folder, a PowerPoint presentation that we will be speaking from, and then just the regular standard Word text draft of it. And this is something that we started a while back, and, and it's just sort of set a little bit while we moved on to other things, but now is really the time to bring it up. So we're calling this the Enhanced Marshal's Office Ordinance, and it is a draft. It's an initial draft, initially, initial as it regards to its exposure to you all. It's actually the fourth draft that we put together, but it's initial in terms of the process of getting it approved. If we move to frame two, there are really two purposes to this today. One is to introduce this initial draft to you all, and then the second one is to basically use this as a demonstration of a general approach that we expect to use to modify and implement changes to ordinances in general. And we'll be looking for your feedback on both of these pieces of it so that we can get this the way that you want it as we do move forward. On frame three, you'll see our current ordinance, and it's very short ordinance compared to other counties that have marshal's offices. And it says, and since it's so short, we'll just read it. Pursuant to OCGA Section 15-10-100, power is given to the office of the county commissioner to enact a marshal's office. County marshal will be subject to the standards of the Georgia Code, Chapter 8, Title 35. The county marshal will have the duty of enforcing the ordinances of Pickens County and prosecuting such ordinances in the county magistrate court. The primary responsibility of the county marshal will be the enforcement of issues pertaining to the environment of the county. So that's all really very, very broad, and it really, as it's applied literally, would mean basically any violation that anyone could make to any ordinance in the code. And so part of what we want to do, and you'll notice that this is basically was, was passed back in 2003 and has never been edited. So we want to make it, bake it just a more specific and accomplish several objectives that we'll discuss in a minute, but just a couple of things. So the first reference, statutory reference to the OCGA, Title 15 is the part of the code that has to do with courts. Chapter 10 is the part of that title that deals with the magistrate's court. So this basically ties to the magistrate's court in the title of courts for its authority to do it. That particular statute, 15-10-100, deals with the appointment of constables by the magistrate's court, and then secondarily, the appointment of marshals by the governing authority of a county. So even though it talks about the governing authority of a county, talks about marshals, it's in the courts title as opposed to the title of the law that deals with local governments. It's just kind of a little bit of a peculiarity. It is actually one of the reasons that we want to enhance this, though. Okay, if we go to frame four, we have six objectives in terms of modifying this, this ordinance. Number one, we want to more effectively empower the marshal's office. Number two, we want to provide more clarity to the role and professional standards of the marshal's office. Number three, we want to stress the public safety core of the marshal's office function. The reason we're saying that is if you go around the state and look at code enforcement across, and we've looked at so many counties, across counties, they fall into really three batches. An approach that's really civilian oriented, and there you'll have code enforcement of any kind that's basically owned usually by planning and development, even though it's broader than that. Or you'll have the other extreme, which is you'll have a marshal's office enforcing code, but enforcing code from a very, very strong law enforcement perspective, you know, so it's just like one end or the other. What we're trying to do here is find something in the middle that, that basically emphasizes and balances both, but we want to, we do believe that code enforcement of any kind is a matter of public safety first and foremost, and so we do want to emphasize that. Number four, we want to foster versatility and balance within code enforcement. We sort of just said that. We want to establish a foundation for growth and interoperability. You'll, you'll see that there are provisions when we get to it that basically provide for expansion of the marshal's office. That's only going to occur with, as, as the county expands population-wise and as, as things, you know, grow and start growing faster. We just want to have the ability to do that, and we want to have a roadmap to do it when it starts. And then number six is really an important one. We want it to be the first step in an integrated renovation of all compliance provisions of the, of the code of ordinances that we have. This is like step one. Step two, we'll move on to the building codes and to other parts of planning and development-oriented codes, because we really need to make them all consistent with each other, eliminate some overlap. We've got a lot of these provisions where enacted at different times. Some of them use the same, different terminology for the same position or for the same offense, and so we want to clean all of that up. But since the marshal's office provision that we read earlier is so general and all-encompassing, we thought that this was the most important place to start. And then after this, and after we adopt, you know, modify this the way you want to modify it, and you all finally adopted, it will sort of be the guide toward how we do the rest of it. Frame five, and this is the collaboration to date. This, this, as I mentioned earlier, this has been sitting around a while, and all the work that we did on this, getting through the fourth draft of it, was prior to the restructuring that you all approved and passed, and so therefore it predated Sloan in terms of his stewardship over the marshal's office. That's why he's not on here, because we just basically put this on through the fourth draft. So the chairman was involved, Chief Magistrate Judge Morris had a lot of involvement in this and did some good heavy lifting on the language of this. The sheriff was involved, county attorney was involved, Cole was involved, I was involved, and we were lucky to have a special advisor on this, Chief Ron Hunter. He's a statewide recognized authority on both law enforcement and code enforcement from a marshal's standpoint. He's retired, I think he had a 43-year career with Cobb and with Cherokee. So we were fortunate to have him, and he was, he was very active in this. On frame six, we look at the benchmark counties that we looked at for this. These are, these are counties that have a marshal's office. There are three or four more counties that have a marshal's office, but we didn't really consider them too much because they're Fulton, Winnetonka, DeKalb, and there's just so much difference in terms of the character of the county and the composition of the county that we didn't look at it. But you'll see basically there the nine that we looked at, and so two of them are actually smaller than Pickens County in terms of population, Raven and Dawson, and then it runs all the way up to Cherokee. So we did a deep dive review of all of the ordinances that they have that basically relate to that. And then frame seven, we have a, really the process that we use. We created the initial draft, which is where we're sitting today. There'll be an interim draft that's going to be based on more collaboration, including your feedback, and then there'll be a public hearing, and then the dark one, and I apologize that's so dark in terms of, but that says final draft in there, that's what'll be ready for BOC action. But again, your input will be incorporated into this before it gets to that point. Then there'll be an adoptive ordinance, and then, and then that adoptive ordinance will be implemented based on standard operating procedures that, that code will be putting in. So I'll stop there for a moment. Has anybody got any comments or questions or anything that we need to alter on this so far? Okay. All right, and I, just in the interest of time, all right, so what is in appendix? The appendix is the actual text of the ordinance, and there's, I think probably the best thing to do is to just look at the structure of it and then look at pieces of it as it relates to, to the chief marshal, and then that'll, that'll provide a flavor for everything else. If we go to frame nine, this is the proposed structure of the ordinance. And we saw existing section 2-321 of the code of ordinances, and we will basically replace that with a reworded provision that's, that just says county marshal's office. There'd be four more sections. Those are the proposed new sections. There'd be the county marshal's office personnel, the chief county marshal, the deputy county marshals, and the code enforcement officers. Those code enforcement officers would be civilians. And basically sections 323, 324, and 325 just set forth the duties and professional qualifications for those, for those provisions. If we go to frame 10, this is the one that replaces the existing ordinance. It's just basically an introduction. We're still, we're still utilizing the authority of the magistrate's provision in the state code. We want to stick with that. The one thing that we're, that we're adding that's, that's an addition is, is that other lawful duties may be imposed on the county's marshal, marshal's office at the discretion of you all. And that, that basically helps to broaden this and make it more flexible to do the things that, that we kind of want to do. If we go to frame 11, the county marshal's office personnel, there'll be the chief county marshal, that's what we have now. In the future, there'll be, we get to the point, grow toward it, there'll be deputy county marshals. The chief county marshal is a sworn mandated position. The deputy county marshals will be sworn positions. The code enforcement officers will be civilians. And then we basically move off into the three provisions that describe the three positions that are there in 2-322. And we have basically the chief county marshal responsible for the day-to-day operations of the marshal's office, shall report to the designee of the board of commissioners. Right now, that's Director Elrod here. Chief marshal will, will be subject to the standards of OCGA, Chapter 8, Title 35, and shall be post-certified. The chief marshal must be at least 21 years of age, have a high school diploma or GED, and possess a valid Georgia, state Georgia's driver's license. The chief county marshal must be a good moral character and standing in the community and not have been convicted of a felony. None of that's in the existing ordinance, and we thought it should be. And then if we go to frame 13, and this is, this is, this is an important one. At his or her discretion, the sitting sheriff of Pickens County may administer the oath of office to the chief county marshal, thereby lawfully instoring such powers as specified by the applicable laws of the state of Georgia. Okay, now those counties that we saw before are benchmark counties. We reviewed all the ordinances in those counties. They fall into two buckets, those particular counties. Some of those marshal's offices are extensions of county police departments that existed once upon a time. Some of those are not, but they're all sworn, they're all have a law enforcement element to it. Prior to January 1st, 1992, a county board of commissioners could just establish a county police department, and that would be it. After that, it takes a referendum of basically the county population to establish that. So those that were, that were, that were done before then and translated into, into marshal's offices, just basically are county police departments covered by that statute. The others basically couldn't be county police departments because they didn't have a referendum, but they wanted to be law enforcement anyway, and so what happens is, is the sitting sheriff of the existing county basically swear those folks in, and everything's covered. And so we adopted that from those county ordinances whereby, you know, this is, that's the method of doing it. But I did want to explain it because it might look, it might look, you know, a little bit, a little bit different. And then we have the powers of the county marshal shall be as forward. We've got basically 10 enumerated powers, none of which I don't think would be a surprise to anyone, especially considering the way that the county marshal, chief county marshal's position is designed. The deputy county marshal, should there come the time where there will be any, have pretty much the same professional standards as the chief marshal and have a similar set, set of duties. And then lastly, and we go to page, I mean, to frame 21, we have the code enforcement officers. And code enforcement officers basically under the direction of, of the chief county marshal will basically be able to go out and cite code violations, issue warnings, all of those things, but it will be under the direction of, of the chief county marshal. They will not have certain powers, obviously, of the chief county marshal or the deputy county marshals if they exist, so they will be limited in that regard. Cole, is there anything you want to add specifically on that, because that might come sooner than later?
Probably, I would say the, well, I think pretty much the operating standards they have right now is kind of what they need to stick with as far as being just civilians. And then if, you know, later on, of course, if they would like to be post-certified, give them the opportunity to be post-certified and then maybe become deputy marshals at the time, FDB, or, you know, granted that opportunity. But then, again, then they may not, they may just want to stay at a civilian position as well, so.
And one of the important pieces of this is, in the future, we're probably going to want to become more active and more specific in our approach to violations of code violations regarding structures and buildings and things like that. And, and so those folks are almost always, I can't think of a single situation I've ever seen where those folks in other counties aren't civilians. You know, they'll be civilians just because of their education, their profession, and their qualifications. So that's going to be ultimately a big piece of this, because there's a really a specialized kind of knowledge that's necessary for that.
And it'd be, you know, getting with them and getting, you know, to go with different departments, especially planning and development, and kind of seeing how, you know, their ordinances and how they go out and they handle things. And then also, too, on my end, you know, it's just, it's going to be, you know, a learning curve for them, so. learning curve for them, so.
When do you foresee us implementing that piece, the code enforcement?
I think that we could, we could, we could implement it as soon as y'all authorized it. We probably have to deal with our resource situation in terms of getting or seeing if we have a qualified resource, getting a qualified resource, figuring out how to do that piece of it. And I think we could do it, we could do it literally as soon as y'all authorized it. It would become much better, though, when we get to the second and third step of this longer process, when we're able to basically take a look at the overall situation. I mean, there's three chapters, the planning and development, sitting over with a lot of overlapping stuff. And, I mean, yeah, I'll give you an example. One of the things that this county doesn't have is, is really a new subsabatement statute. And without going to whether or not, in this meeting, there's one that's needed or not, this county does have a, an ordinance that basically allows the quote-unquote "building official," is a technical term, to deal with dilapidated and unsafe properties. And that would be, what you're talking about, Commissioner, could be done under that. It would be, it would be much clearer and much easier to do once we're able to modernize that because there's a state statute that provides guidance on how to abate properties that are unsafe, and we are not in line with that. And it's a timing thing. It was just so much older than the state. So, but all I'm saying is, we could do it. We'd just like to change the actual code at some point in time that they're out enforcing.
And just right quick, you know, just touching on this with the code enforcement officers. So like animal control right now, you know, if they have a case and they're working it, so they can't write citations, especially if they're dealing with a ongoing case, and maybe they've warned somebody time and time again. So they're either having to wait on the sheriff's office to come out there to help them write the citation, to complete the case, and, you know, and move it forward, or, you know, if I can help them out. And then there's sometimes that, you know, either I might be busy or the sheriff's office is busy, and so it kind of puts their case on a standstill, and it's hard for them to kind of get that completed. So giving them, you know, getting this through and everything, giving them that ability to, you know, start, you know, to help them out with their cases if they have to cite someone, so.
So I know one of the things that Bill had talked about on one of the early slides was on the process of basically getting this draft into your hands to be reviewing, to take a look and see if you see things that could be added or taken out, or you have concerns about that we can then work with Bill to ensure that legally we've got it all squared away. Once we get that draft in place, scheduling the public hearing, it would be necessary to change the ordinance and get that scheduled and in place, and we'd be able to move forward to get this signed in. So this was kind of the first step to give you the copy and the background, also to kind of show the need for increased number of work sessions so that we can create the opportunities for those public hearings, so that we can do those. And then hopefully, we, once we get this process through, the bigger picture ones go into planning and development with their codes and building codes. And I know both Justin and Wes have been identifying, Justin had been identifying several areas for quite a while, Wes has identified several, and Bill's been working with both of them on ways that we can do away with overlap, clean it up, actually reach out to a few of our builders and developers to get their voice in the process, so that we make sure we're communicating closely with everybody to know that we're all on the same page and get a clean, simplified version, so. Any questions related to that? I know it's thorough, but I think that thorough in this particular category is very good, so we need to make sure we get that right. We need to. We definitely don't even get that one wrong at all. Next item is on a COVID update. I know that we started the last work session with Director Elrod here to sort of get updated on what's going on.
Several things. Here in the last couple of weeks, I mean, the state's averaging almost 7,000 a day. If you, if you take a two-week average and you divide it, it's about 7,000 a day that they're averaging. That being said, the last, for the last two weeks, Pickens has had 203 for our last two weeks. That was a significant jump, but we had 22 since yesterday. Keep in mind, we're still not doing a whole lot of testing here. Mako has still not gave me a confirmation that they're coming on the seventh. That was the date that was discussed that we would, they would start testing on Tuesdays here. They have not got back with me to give me confirmation on that yet.
So where do people get tested? I mean, I get asked that all the time.
It's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They are at Gilmer County from 8:00 to 2:00. Cherokee County is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then Whitfield is, looks like Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday as well at Whitfield County. Mako is doing the testing there.
Are they 8:00 to 2:00 all solo?
They're actually 8:00 to 3:00. Cherokee and Whitfield are both 8:00 to 3:00. Gilmer and what was proposed was 8:00 to 2:00 as far as us as well. Like I say, I haven't got confirmation. We've got a location, but we haven't got confirmation. It is the church. We've got confirmation from Pastor Mock at Mount Zion that we can utilize the church on Tuesdays from 8:00 to 2:00, or Mako can. They come in, they do all their testing. That is the PCR test, so it's not a rapid test. You're not going to know that day. But they're very good about getting them back within 24 hours, so usually the next morning you know early. That being said, it's graciously, the health department here, as I say that, now this is for county employees, school officials, and public safety folks.
What about the booster shot? I've been asked about that a lot. Is that available yet?
It, well, it is, but you have to fit the criteria, and it's, you know, specific health illnesses and stuff. They are looking at the boosters being available. They're still trying, they're still working it out. They're trying to get it past to where if you have had your second dose, and eight months later, you can possibly get, you know, you can get your third dose. They're looking at expanding that to public safety folks, the older folks. Basically, just how they wrapped it up and was able to start the shots is how they're looking at trying to do that. Discussion that they're wanting for that to happen is the week of the 20th of this month. So, but there's no confirmation on that yet either. So I kind of forgot where I was at with my COVID numbers here. Just to give you a little bit on the surrounding counties for the last two weeks, like I said, we were, we're at 203 for the last two weeks. We've had 203 positive in Pickens County. Gordon County, which is one of our surrounding counties, 573. They have a bigger population as well. Gilmer County is 297. The one that I kind of find a little shocking is Dawson County. They're in a different health district, so I cannot speak, but obviously, the way these numbers are, they're averaging, or they, for the last two weeks, 451 positive for two weeks. They have a lesser percentage than we do, you know, population-wise, so it's kind of shocking to me. So I thoroughly believe that they're testing over there, because that's one thing we're not, and I think our numbers are probably a little higher than what they're actually showing on this at the time. But Cherokee County for the last two weeks is 2,299. So, like I said, I haven't been able to confirm with Mako that they're going to start on That was the date that was discussed, and like I say, Pastor Mock at Mount Zion has already graciously came back and gave the blessing that that's, that's good to go. So it's up to Mako at this point to give me confirmation that they're coming. That's it. Other than that, sure, I've got some questions that I may be able to shoot from the hip, to be honest with you. I did want to also mention, we went to Alabama and finally got our truck back from over a year ago when we wrecked engine 11.
That took a while.
Yeah, it's a little over a year. I don't remember the exact date I was pulling into Panama City and got the call, so. But I know it was end of June or the first of July, because I was down there for the fourth. I do remember that, but I just don't remember. That was a...
So do we have any general discussion points? Anything that was not covered on the agenda that you guys wanted to discuss?
Is that pass free to public? Is COVID pass free to public? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We will close the work session, 5:12. Now we'll close the work session portion of the meeting until we have a 5:30 is when our actual work meeting is going to begin. I noticed a couple that were coming up to the back door, looking in the window, trying to figure out why we already had a meeting going, so we'll get this one wrapped up and get ready to go if you're able to stick around. We'd love to have you. And as department heads, I know some of you guys are ready to run and get out of here, so. But thank you for everything y'all are doing. I mean, especially right now with COVID, I know we've had a few offices that have seen some increase in numbers of employees, like Paul said, that we're having to use that sick leave a lot more, so. Let's all still remember to be safe. If you're, if you're not feeling well, stay away. If you've been tested and you're negative, and you still just don't feel right, wear your mask, be smart, you know, try to protect anybody that's around you. Wash your hands thoroughly. We've not reached a point of trying to implement a full-blown mask policy at this point, but we, you know, we have been discussing it, we've talked about it if we had to, and trying to make sure we've got contingencies. Obviously, we're not immune to it in our county. Our city hall had to close this week because of the number of cases that they had in a small space, so we know it's possible, but just be smart. I know each of you, I think you're doing very well, but let's just don't let your guard down. Let's all pay attention. And thank you again for coming.